I see we have four of the board and I've been advised that the fifth won't be in attendance tonight, so we can get underway if that's alright with everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, alright. So, we have the agenda as it was posted. What's the pleasure of the board regarding the agenda?
Move to approve.
Thanks Tracy, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Tim, any changes to be made? I have one, could we add in the 10A, which would be a second executive session on the same citation? And that would be just the board to begin the town manager's annual performance review. Any other changes? Alright, all in favor of adopting the agenda as we just amended it, say aye.
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 That was unanimous. Item two, approval of the board minutes of May 10th.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Atherton, yeah?
Elaine informed me that was a typo, that it should be the board minutes from April 20...
Oh, correct. Alright, so it's incorrect on the agenda, but it's correct in the actual minutes.
April 26th, sorry.
Thank you for pointing that out. So, there's a motion to approve the minutes of April 26th as they were presented. Is there a second? A second from Tim, any errors or omissions in the minutes? There kind of are, right? So, we got in the packet, just the first page or so, plus an appendix, but then later on, we got the full, the full minutes from Elaine in a separate email, right? Did all the board members get that?
Yes.
Okay. So, as long as we're all clear, you know, we're voting on the full minutes and not just the part that wound up in the packet, alright? So, all in favor of approval of the minutes in full as they were submitted, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, one extension. So, Hopkins, Giles, and Wyman in favor and Coolidge abstains. He was not present for part of the meeting. Item three, the town manager's report, please, Mr. Atherton.
Us from a report for the week, April 26th and May 3rd. Segment six sidewalk repairs replacement continue on Franklin Street and Conant Square. West Seminary Street has been milled and was paved today. They'll be pouring more concrete sidewalk tomorrow. Sean and I have been working on the MRGP list with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to determine which road segments will be completed with the $20,000 grant we received. This program identifies road segments that need work on mostly drainage and runoff. So, we're actually meeting with Stephanie at the RPC next Tuesday to go over areas we've identified that we'd like to use the grant on, so I'll fill in on that at the next meeting. The sub grant agreement for 389 Newton Road property buyout has been reviewed and signed. Next steps will be soliciting quotes from appraisers and title work. We've received a Class II Highway Structures grant for the Arnold District Road Culvert. We'll be meeting with the engineers to discuss next steps. We're trying to set that meeting up tomorrow. Attended the April 29th Regional Transportation Council meeting. There was further discussion on state highway project rankings as well as the Vtrans Bike and Ped grants. But I believe we're gonna do something through REC on that one this year. Bill Moore. Right? Yes. Attended the April 28th Rutland Regional Planning Commission Emergency Management Hot Topic Meeting. This is for emergency management directors. Discussion was on debris management after disaster. REC news, Safety Day is back. Thanks to a generous sponsorship from Omea and our fantastic safety volunteers and professionals, we'll be hosting our annual Safety Day and Bike rodeo at the Brandon Fire Department on May 15th. Chief Kelpack and our volunteers will play host to the Brandon REC, Brandon PD, and Brandon Rescue. And SBPTO will be helping us to properly size and fit these free, Omea-sponsored bike helmets for area youth of all ages. There'll be hot dogs by the Brandon Toy Project Bike Mechanic Station manned by members of the newly formed Brandon Area Bicycle Association and Dan Boyce. All-around safety guru W. Boyce will be manning a riding safety course. Join us 10-2-1. Our Estabrook Archery Course sold out. We'll be offering another course late summer. The Jack McKernan Drive-In Estabrook Collaboration with the Paramount will be opening on May 28th with a private celebration for Otter Valley High School seniors with a movie and fireworks. The regular public drive-in schedule will soon be up. We're working to select movies for the June and mid-July showings. Stay tuned. Our summer rec programming will be announced at the Safety Day. Some new exciting camps will be happening around getting youth back outside. Fishing, riding, outdoor musical, riding workshops, trail building are among some of the offerings. We recently submitted a grant proposal to underwrite most of the cost of these camps in an effort to access ARPA funds to make it accessible for all. And the grant notification, it will be on May 26th. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you Dave. Any questions for town manager from the board?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm curious about any update you can give us on the downtown Wi-Fi and kind of where that's at and, you know, how it's coming along. And I'm curious if we have any plans to have like signs somewhere along the sidewalk that would let people know how that we have free Wi-Fi and... Interested.
I'd be happy to step in and talk to them. So, I met with Justin, who is the contractor. We had a three-hour-long, on one of the cold days in the end of April, going around and pinpointing the spots where we'd be potentially putting the, all the spots, all the Wi-Fi repeaters and access points. So, he's supposed to be getting us a quote here fairly soon. But I mean, we've got spots designated for it. We've got some backbone that'll be backfed at the library here at the Town Hall and potentially down at the, down at the Stephen A. Douglas House. And then some repeaters will be put up in different places. But we mapped it all out, again, three hours. It was a cold day. I was wearing shorts, but we got it mapped out, so I'm just waiting for the quote from him, so.
That's very exciting. Thank you for that update. Do you have any kind of sense of, you know, timeline? Are we talking like a couple of months from now or a couple of weeks from now or?
But that, I'm not sure. I'm sure he's like overwhelmed because everyone else is getting this brought. I was able to get him to come here because I bought him tacos at Foley Taco and Bean. And so, because, because they were buying me beer and taco and I drove, we were able to do the... So, I gotta send a follow-up and find out when this is gonna happen. But this is, this is this summer project in ID, you know, he says that once we get approval and get the stuff put up, he should be able to put it up fairly quickly. And then again, like for us on our end is then establishing our landing page, which goes along with something that Dave and I are working on with the retooling of the town website. There'll also be a landing page to direct people to our website into the chamber and potentially DBA if they get our website together.
That's exciting news. Thanks for the update.
Any other questions for the town manager from the board? From the public? Representative Jerome?
Just wanna say I was glad to see that we were applying for the ARPA funds and using them for recreation in the town. It's great use of money.
Thank you for that. Thanks for the encouragement. And Dave, thanks for the report. Bill, thanks for the help, making the connection there with the people who can make it happen for the downtown Wi-Fi. Item four is public comment and participation. This is items not on the agenda elsewhere tonight. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up? We can start with the board. And we can proceed to the public. Chief Brakel.
Yeah, I'd just like to kinda, there are a lot of things going on within state government and federal funding and everything else. And there, over the last few years, there have been very limited amounts of grants that have been available to law enforcement. But I just wanted to recognize that as I come to each board meeting and listen to the conversations that are going on, even though I'm not a part of those conversations, that I recognize that the town manager and both Bill Moore have been deeply engaged in a lot of grant opportunities, bringing funding to our town that I think sometimes people don't recognize the amount of work that's associated with that. And so, I just wanna recognize them for the efforts on that, on the things that they're bringing to the town and that people should know that it's not just you sign your name to a piece of paper and you get the money. There's work involved in it and it takes quite a bit of time.
Absolutely right and comments well taken and I share them. And I do, I think it's worth emphasizing that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes on and a lot of research and information gathering. These grants generally come with a lot of qualifications that have to be met and they have to be met in legitimate and serious ways with actual, actual facts of the situation here in Brandon. So, we are really fortunate, blessed, whatever the word is you wanna use, to have a town manager and department heads, and I count the chief among those, who actively pursue these additional outside sources of funding. I've said it in kind of a flip manner, but I really believe it to be true. You know, Vermont runs on volunteers is someone else's favorite thing to say. And I always say Vermont runs on volunteers and Brandon runs on volunteers plus other people's money. And it's really, these outside grants are what allows Brandon to make progress beyond what its admittedly fairly small tax base would otherwise allow us to do. So, thank you again for highlighting that, chief. Representative Stephanie Jerome, did you have a hand up for a comment?
Sure, yeah, I just wanna say a couple of things. So, the legislature will be in session for two more weeks, we hear, possibly three. And it's, we're working on trying to get this final group of bills out and to get the budget passed. And as you know, this year has been crazy busy with this new chunk of money coming from the American Rescue Plan. And so, I am really encouraged to hear that the town is tapping into those funds. There's so much money and so much opportunity. And I do believe that many towns are not, just to follow up with what chief and what, and with the chair was saying is that there's so much money and, but there are many, many towns that don't have the capacity to even, even to tap into it. So, I'm really, really pleased to see that you're doing that. Next week is a kind of a major bill that's gonna be, being, or hopefully passed. It's S-15, it's to allow absentee voting again for our election, our coming elections. And I think we could all agree that with absentee voting last during the general election in November, that there was a huge number of people that participated in our election and democracy that, you know, maybe we, maybe never would have if not, if not it hadn't been more easily accessible to vote. So, that is coming out next week. And I've been out, I've been reaching out to our area clerks to make sure that they have any questions or concerns about that bill. So, that's a big one. And I've just, in my committee, I've been working on unemployment insurance and trying to make sure that we're gonna have, being able to refund that for the next pandemic, next recession, whatever. You know, we're gonna have enough money in the state to do that and have it be fair and equitable to the, both the employees and the employers and those who benefit from it. So, anyway, it's an extremely busy time and, as you know, we're all working on Zoom. It's been kind of crazy, but it's been worthwhile and I'm hoping we get a lot, good work come out at the end. So, thank you. And I'm gonna have to pop off, but I did wanna just check in and say hi to everybody and let you know that I'm here if you need me. Take care.
Thanks so much Stephanie. Thanks for doing, doing this. Other public comment? Items not on the agenda? Always plenty of public comment opportunities for each agenda item. So, I have a hand up, Brent Bueller, great.
Good evening. I noticed the, I guess maybe it was in the minutes or something, the Vermont statute that was published? Was that in the minutes? It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it was in the minutes.
Right, so that was something that we talked about at the last meeting. It was material that was furnished to the board and we asked for it to be added in appendix to the hearings related to the noise. Yep.
Correct. I recall that. So, there was some, there was the statute, but then there was also a town ordinance and seemed like some commentary. And I, I just didn't understand where all of that came from.
That entire report came from Chief Brakel and it was information we had asked him to put together to advise the board. And so, we included it as information for the public to see.
Okay. And then will this at some point be combined with then the survey from High Pond Road and the other comments so that it's a comprehensive, a public report?
My understanding is that those were the minutes that were mailed, that were emailed to the board late because they didn't make it into the packet, which was a small oversight. Dave has something to add to this.
So, those minutes and that appendix are on the town website and there's actually a couple other... Yeah, I can't even think of the word right now. Links you can click on for all of the correspondence and the letters and everything as well. If you go to meeting minutes, you'll see that, you'll see them listed.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
And I believe that the, the information that Chief Brakel had given us, I think it was you that asked if we'd put it on the website or whatever, so that's why it was...
Again, thank you.
Yep.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks Brent. Other members of the public with something to bring up tonight? Okay, well, we'll go along, but you know, it's very informal and it's a very small crowd tonight, so feel free. So, item five, discussion about a tree committee. I don't think, well, we do have some stuff. Dave got us from the VLCT handbook. He got us a citation about the tree warden. Wayne Kingsley is our tree warden. And wondered, Dave, do you wanna introduce what's, what's been asked about in terms of a committee?
Um, I can. I don't know how much more has been discussed with select board members or not, but we did have some folks that had brought up reinstating the tree committee that we used to have a bunch of years ago. I really don't remember it, but it looks like there were minutes in like 2013. So, there's like four folks that wanted to be on the tree committee. I'm not really sure what the, what the role entails. But I did add this in here from our, the select board handbook. It's, this shows the statutory role as the tree warden. And as you know, this past year, there's been quite a bit more power that the tree warden has with, you know, dealing with, with our trees and our public right-of-ways and public shade trees and everything. And actually, the VLCT newsletter that came out today has a whole section on all the new tree warden rules. So, that's why I wanted to include it in there, just so everyone was aware of, you know, what our tree warden does and how involved he is. And, you know, he's, he's staying up on all of the seminars and the changes in statute. So, he's actually been a pleasure to work with.
Yeah, Tim. Yeah, thanks Dave. I, I, as you know, I attended this tree warden school with Wayne over the last couple of months or so. It's a off-and-on thing. It sounds like some towns have success with community groups that help the tree warden. But it seems, from, from what I learned along the way, that, that it all depends on the tree warden, you know, overseeing properly. So, so the order of authority is very clear. And I'm kind of curious whether you've had any chance to check with Wayne and see if he likes the idea of having a group of, of people, you know, possibly helping him? Because that free manpower can be a very good thing and a way to include the community.
So, I did, I gave Wayne a call a week or so ago. We just played some phone tag. He left me a lengthy message. His concern was that he would have to teach people to get up to speed to where we're at with the rules and regs and statutes that the tree warden follows now. Yeah, my guess is this came out of, you know, us cutting the trees down on Park Street that were hollow and a couple of people weren't happy about it. So, um, yeah, I don't really know. I looked at through like old files that Elaine had pulled on what the tree committees did. I found like a, a tree ordinance that was never, you know, it never saw the light of day and like an inventory, but that was really all I could find. So, I don't, I don't really know what their, what their goal is moving forward and how it would, if it would benefit Wayne or not. I mean, you know, Wayne is the deciding factor on, on our trees and that he, he's been a great guy to work with and, you know, even with all the new trees we planted. We, him and I have talked a few times about the possibility of hiring like a licensed arborist to come in and do our tree pruning for the next few years, so that we make sure that the new trees grow the way they're supposed to, so.
I have another question along those same lines. You know, when I think back to when the tree committee existed and possibly when it was formed, which was longer ago than that, it's, it seems like it was a time kind of pre-tree warden authorities when the, the tree committee might have been more of a, an active deciding group. Where it seems like now with our tree warden and operating under state statutes, that clearly the tree warden is the one who's in charge. And, and I'm wondering if this group needs our permission at all? Whether this can't be like a, you know, a garden club or something where there are people who are interested in trees and, and they can get together and, and, you know, offer support to our tree warden or, you know, in other words, I, I'm kind of wondering if they need the town's authority at all in this?
I would think that there would need to be some authority if they were planning on working in the town right-of-way and trying to delegate to the tree warden what should and shouldn't be done. That would, that would be my concern. I believe that this tree committee started out years ago from another tree that, another famous tree that was cut on Park Street. That, that's what I've gathered, so. I don't know. I, I, I don't wanna see us lose a good tree warden neither if there's a committee that's overseeing them, I guess is a good way to look, to make it sound. Like, again, like I said, you know, Wayne's been great and he's staying up on all the new law and everything and he's, it's just been a pleasure to work with. So, I hate to see that go away.
Yeah, I see some hands up. How about maybe Bernie first?
But this might help a little bit, Dave. The tree committee that I remember the most was mid-'70s. And that's when Center Street, Park Street, business area had nothing at all for trees. There was just nothing in the whole downtown for trees at all. And Tom Brown and a couple of the guys got together and they planted a bunch of ash and maples and some other things. And that was the big push. And those are probably the trees that just got cut down when we started doing segment six. So, that's, that was the most active tree committee back when a lot of things weren't getting done and a lot of things got done by kind of private push. So, having that, a true tree warden who's very active and involved is really kind of the first time I remember that happening.
Thanks Bernie for that context. And Tracy, did you have a hand up?
Yeah, I was gonna kind of echo what Bernie had said too. But I also believe that being that we've got a tree warden that is retired from the Forest Service with, I'm guessing 40 years, I don't really think he needs anybody to oversee him. He does quite well at what he does and, as Dave said, I, I don't think we need to have somebody looking over his shoulder just to, to the possibility of losing a good tree warden.
Thank you Tracy. Do you see a hand up, Ms. Jensen?
It's, it's, we need to unmute her for, anyway. Oh, there it is.
So, how do we get my picture in here? Hi, this is Ken McFarrel and I'm Yata Jensen's husband. And, and we have been in discussion with several people in town about the revitalization of the tree committee that was chaired for a long time by Laura Peterson. Her name has not come up at all and I'm sorry she had a prior commitment. She couldn't be here this evening. But in, in my understanding that she shared a lot of documents with me, including a survey, an extensive exhaustive tree survey that was done in 2003, 2004, which clearly needs to be updated. And, and in any conversations we've had, there's never been any thought of having any kind of oversight role for the, for the tree warden. It was always envisioned as a cooperative relationship in which we helped to further this and extend the, the survey that was begun then, almost 20 years ago. And, and then to help in a cooperative, totally cooperative fashion with the town to develop a tree plan. There's never been any intention that I understand in our conversations or I understand with the tree committee before. And I believe Mr. Hopkins, she sent you a list of the information on the prior members. And do you remember, recall getting that?
Yes, we've had that. Yep.
Yes, right, exactly. And we're totally new here, like less than two years. And I have no desire, I mean, I've, I've done my time on committees and on panels and whatever. But nonetheless, I mean, we see in the town plan for 2016, as, as, as modified in 2019, a call for attention to the urban landscape, to the treescape. And I see no, nothing negative about citizens being involved in a committee that would adopt a series of bylaws, perhaps modeled after the tree committee in Middlebury, that would be in any way deleterious to the overall goals of beautifying the urban landscape and maintaining the urban landscape. This is not a reaction to the tree removal. This isn't, you know, people need some education, it's a goal to get education as relates to trees, you know, things like proper mulching techniques. And to perhaps begin to return the town to its urban forest status it was so famous for, has been so famous for. So, this notion that, I don't know, this idea that's been presented that somehow or another is a desire to oversee the tree warden, I don't know where that comes from actually. You know, we would like, my wife, especially my wife has had extensive tier experience and matters of tree pruning, tree management, working extensively with Davy Tree and working with arborists. And, but this, the whole idea, it sounds like this is being put forward as, as something negative. And still, I mean, we've all, you know, in trying to encourage the revitalization and as Laura has said, that looking at as a post-segment six revitalization in the urban forest. I'm not sure why that's bad. Maybe, I know Bernie fairly well. Bernie, did you know Laura Peterson was chair of the tree committee?
Yeah, I forgot about her. They, she, it was around 2000, right? I think late '90s, early 2000s.
And for quite some while, yes, right. Very energetic, very dedicated.
Yep, yep.
I don't, I don't think she took, yeah, very cooperative with everybody. So, help, I mean, help me to understand why that's a bad thing.
I certainly see it as a positive thing for townspeople to become involved and supportive as long as it's clearly under the direction of our tree warden.
Sure. And in cooperation with town government officials. That's the only way you're gonna leverage grant funds and you're gonna help need grant funds. I mean, I understand Mr. Atherton has been very effective in bringing in, and, and Mr. Hopkins stated before about the importance of grant funding for projects in Brandon when tax dollars weren't available. So, yeah. And the other thing we've talked about is gaining the status of Arbor Day Tree City, which both Middlebury and Rutland have. And it could bring funds into the town for tree work. And I don't know, I see, I mean, I'm really a bit surprised that this is being perceived in such a, you know, not a very positive light.
Some further comment? So, I do wanna just clarify that yes, we got some information, or I got some information from Laura Peterson, which I dutifully and immediately forwarded to the rest of the board and the town manager. And we had a little bit of a back and forth, or I had a little bit of a back and forth with Laura, kind of trying to ascertain, you know, the types of things that they were interested in doing and so forth. And as far as addressing the, the questions that have come up in this meeting, which I would note, none have come from me. I just want to address the idea about the timing, which is that is another of those behind-the-scenes things, but I know at least a couple of selectmen and the town manager received more than one phone call and email when some tree work was done on Park Street at the direction of the tree ward. The phone calls and emails were, they were very well-intentioned. They expressed a great deal of concern and not a small amount of emotion. And I think that people do tend to, they tend to appreciate the trees that are growing on the, on the street where they live or the street where they walk or the street where they work. And they become attached to them and those are all good things. And that the tree warden had made a determination that some of the older trees at the east end of Park Street were in need of attention. And that in fact, some of them could no longer be kept alive safely. I did want to share, if I could, Bill, did you allow me a screen share? Yeah, thanks. I just wanna share a picture that I took of one of these trees that I'm talking about. Can you see the tree? I, I just want to share a picture um that I took of one of these trees that I'm talking about. Can you see the tree that I'm looking at right now? Have I successfully screen shared this? Okay. So I mean, that, that's a tree that I could have um I could have crawled through the hole in that tree that was a significant enough amount of rot. And that's, that's um something that on the outside, there were some live branches. That was a tree that, you know, it had some greenery left to it, and that was one of the trees in question. And I know that the tree warden had a particular, um he, he had, he kind of questioned his own judgment and he had a particular desire to do the right thing, but he felt that, you know, as a professional who'd been working with trees for his entire career, that the right thing for public safety and for the safety of the properties around that tree was that that tree needs to come down, as did a couple of others in that same vicinity. So I think that that's probably where the concern is coming from, uh, Mr. McFarland, is that there was um some public pushback related to these trees being marked. Some of it was on front porch forum. And then it uh became something that the selectmen were addressed with and the town manager was addressed with and the tree warden was addressed with. And I think that that's probably where you're starting to hear some of the concern that um, the way that I'll put it is this, I think that the town elects a select board and we have the general oversight of the town. And we do care about trees. We have a tree warden who's a professional. And he's um a consummate professional and he's an educated man in his field. And I'm not against the idea of citizen involvement, and I'm not even against the idea of a tree committee, depending on the form that it takes. Uh, but I am a little bit worried about um a tree committee that's, that, that will get um that will react to a decision of the tree warden in a way that doesn't recognize the tree warden's professional expertise.
Well, let me just then say that in conversations that several of us have had in relation to the idea of bringing back, returning the tree committee to a place of um activity within the town, the whole concept has been to look forward and not to look back. Everybody knows those trees are gone. Uh, they did have problems, there's no question about it. Everybody wants to work cooperative, cooperatively with the tree warden. I understand he's, I haven't met him personally, but everybody says he's just a super guy. He's very knowledgeable. There's no desire to go back and, and whip up a frenzy about trees that have been removed. They're gone. The desire is to develop a plan that will look forward, not look backward. We're, we're looking backward now in this conversation and that's not anybody's desire of anybody I've talked to to do that. I know initially there was some emotional reaction. I think that's normal. I've been involved in a number of, for a long, uh, just quickly, but go back to tell you about I lived in Durham, North Carolina. I actually grew up in Durham, North Carolina. And the Historic Preservation Society of Durham grew out of the fact that the old uh Washington Duke Hotel was sort of almost overnight demolished. And all of a sudden, set people said, oh my God, what happened here? Let's get back and do some positive things. And that's what this committee is, as it is envisioned. I'm not on the committee. Committee doesn't exist as far as I know. But what our thought is in conversations about revitalizing the committee is this would be very positive, work with the town, work with everybody. Work with Mr. Atherton as far as getting grants. Nothing looking back, nothing, you know, I, I, it's not, nobody's talked about that anymore. But anyway, you have to do, you know, I'm not sure what's required. And I mean, clearly that the approval of, of the select board would be a desirable thing. And working with everybody cooperatively. And I think we all want the same thing, as I understand it. So, you know, nobody wants to take charge and be overseeing the tree warden and yeah, sorry. Anyway, I think that's probably, I've said enough. I didn't actually intend to say anything. I'm sorry that here I am, in here less than two years. And I'm, my wife and I are being the, but we have a lot of experience along these lines. We both managed major historical properties, historic landmark properties that have had lots of tree responsibilities. And so we're not unfamiliar with the, the issues involved. And so we just want to do the right thing by the town and not step on anybody's toes, work together for what everybody wants, including Bernie Carr there is looking in another direction. Hey Bernie. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I'm sorry I said this, but I didn't intend to say anything.
No, we welcome the contribution. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the, for the contributions or a pleasure of the board on a direction?
I, I'd like to see the board, um, you know, wait for um, uh, some kind of formal request that we need to vote on, so we can see what form they're looking for. And I'm certainly ready to support um a tree committee that is um properly um under the authority of the um tree ward.
Would it be a good idea then to maybe ask those who are interested in forming the committee to uh bring to the board or email to the board or to the town manager and then uh through him to the board their proposed scope of um, scope of operations, so to speak, or scope of, you know, what their committee would entail, what kind of work projects they anticipated doing, want to do, that kind of thing?
Yeah, and if I, if I were the person reaching out to them, whoever reaches out to them, I'm assuming it'll be Dave or someone um that suggests that they talk with Wayne, because I, I would love to have Wayne's blessing on whatever form this takes, because I think we all want to see Wayne stay, be supported and stay um, you know, in, in a good position with his, his, his work as tree warden.
Others uh in agreement or contrary minded?
That sounds good.
Thanks, Brian. Brian, uh Tracy, any thoughts?
Bob. I'm always interested to hear what they've got to say.
All right, so uh can we just make a statement in this meeting that um if the folks who are interested in forming a tree committee? Um, and let's talk about it as a, as a from scratch thing, uh as was suggested, not to look back uh at the old tree committee as uh being reopened, but a new entity. Um, and as Tim has pointed out, um a new entity that would be operating within the current Vermont framework for tree wardens and, you know, public trees and so forth in Vermont. This is this whole area has had a fairly significant overhaul in the recent, recent past. So could we ask those who are interested in forming a tree committee or, and or serving on one to um pop an email over to the town manager saying uh the kinds of work that they'd like to assist with and the kinds of projects that they'd like to do and so forth? And we'll leave it at that for now and see, um, see what, what comes in. Dave, um can you correct me, for segment six trees, there is a fairly comprehensive inventory, is there not?
We have a whole set of plans for trees and all the plantings that took place. Um, I believe, just so folks know, we planted a hundred and ninety seven trees on segment six. And we are planning on putting new trees on Park Street once the stumps are ground.
So would it be possible to um uh ask for some input from Wayne? Um I, I, I know that part of the um tree warden school was to talk about um a tree plan that some communities are doing and um, you know, Wayne sounded uh, when I heard him speak during the class, like he was positive to this idea. And um, I, I'd be curious to know kind of his view of, of um and, and, and just to be clear, the tree plan um extends quite beyond Route Seven Quarter, you know, the, the segment six. It's um, a tree plan would really kind of talk about the whole town of Brandon. Um So is, is it reasonable to maybe ask Wayne to, to weigh in with this?
Sure. I, yes and no, Tim. My thought is like, I don't know if we need to burden Wayne with this. I think that it would be good to see the tree committee come up with a plan and like a mission statement on what they want to do. And then present it to Wayne and see what his take is on it. I, I, I think that might go a little further than, you know, but it's up to you guys.
There's a hand raised uh from Yata and Ken?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. Yeah, I think that what Mr. Atherton just said is absolutely on the mark. Um, I um, I, I have been searching out some different, there are tree committees all over the country. Uh, and um and they, they have mission statements and, and um then bylaws, and I've been looking at some of the mission statements, and I think that uh that's clearly something that any committee should uh set forth. And I think that then what, what has just been said as far as then commuting that um communicating that to the tree warden is that the perfectly logical way to proceed. And so I, I'll be back. I mean, again, I'm not on a committee right now. We're just talking about trying to get the committee rolling. Uh, but um, I'll be in touch with other people who've been in this conversation. And um, as you know, Neil Silas is interested in being involved and uh and, and others. And so, and then we'll see what we can do about drafting out a mission statement, you know, something fairly straightforward and you know, fifty words or so. And I think that um, that, that's a very, very positive way of going about it.
Is there a way, uh, Dave, that we could, or you could, I guess it's you, you could um, or Tim, provide to the folks who are interested in doing this? Um, like, is there like a VLCT kind of digest of the new tree law changes? It seems like we got something that was kind of a summary of the new tree law changes in Vermont within the last couple of years.
I have it right here on a two, two-page um, all you need to know about trees thing from VLCT that came today.
There you go. Could you maybe pass that along to the folks who are gonna help?
Sure.
Excellent. That sound good, everybody? Enough, enough on that one or?
Yes.
Comment?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, uh, consider reinstating interest and penalty on sewer and taxes. I'm just gonna ask um in a totally non-threatening manner, is there new information about this? Or was this just designed to be on the agenda because um it wasn't a full board at the last meeting?
So it was asked, oh, go ahead, Brian, go ahead.
Oh, can we just table this and bring this up at the next meeting with a full board?
With a full board, yeah, I, I figured that was the intention. So yeah, if that's acceptable to everyone, we'll table this until there's a full board. I don't see any objections. Item seven, consider an ordinance uh for the use of town parks and recreational areas. Um, there's a draft in the packet, which I appreciate. And uh Dave, can you introduce it, please?
Uh, sure. So, I don't know, a few meetings back, we had this conversation that sort of came out of the all of our wonderful noise ordinance discussions, um, that we should come up with an ordinance for the use for our town parks and rec areas. So um, I took a stab at it. Got some information from some other towns and things they did and, and floated this along to our attorney. Um, which um, I actually, which kind of segues into our next one too. Um, one of the things was, well, we'll go on to the next one. Anyway, the, the ordinance um, kind of covers sort of, it's pretty basic. Um, wanted to throw it in as a draft for you guys to look, take a look at and see what you think and any suggestions or comments or whatever, and go from there.
Thank you for doing that and thank you for having the town attorney have, having already reviewed it before we got to uh had to work on it. What's the pleasure of the board? What's the comment on this?
Yeah, I um, I appreciate um the, the ordinance uh that you wrote. It's um, it seems straightforward. My, my only question is um, the penalties seem to be um severe, and I'm just wondering if uh kind of how we came up with those numbers and whether or not um it wouldn't be just as useful to have a more modest, you know, slap on the wrist kind of fee rather than um the, the really hefty fine that um is there.
Uh, Tim, you guys can set whatever fine you want. I, I don't know, five hundred came up and I figured half of it was two fifty, so. Um, I think the big, the big part of this with fines and penalties is the um, you know, the prohibiting alcohol use unless there's, you know, a licensed caterer and things like that, you know. I can't see PD driving around finding someone five hundred bucks for walking on the park at ten fifteen at night, but
Right.
Um, I mean, this, this would be, this was more focused on those, those types of things, um, or if there was any vandalism or whatever. Um, but you know, the, the alcohol rules are what really sort of um triggered that, that we want to make sure people are doing it properly and licensed and um, you know, we, we've been doing it for the town hall for a while. Actually, Seth and I were talking about this earlier today, that we did a, you know, a town hall rental uh forum back in, I think, twenty sixteen it was, the same thing with, you know, you'd have to have a licensed caterer that has their, their liquor classes, you know, the things we do at the liquor board meetings. Um, because it, we don't want to assume that liability. So, um unless it's Bill Moore, and then we've got, the next one will go into that. But, so that's why the fines were there. I'm sure that, you know, those can be changed and I'm sure Chief Brakal has um some suggestions if you know, actually, he looked at this too, from what I remember. Yeah, does he remember? Yeah, so um, yeah, I mean, go, it's, like I said, this is the first draft, so it's open for improvement, changes, whatever.
Tim, did you want to suggest a change to the um violation?
Well, I, I see Tracy has a comment. I, I'm
Sorry, I didn't see that, Tracy.
No, I mean, I, I'm just, I, I'm good with it the way it's written.
Okay. Anyone, I, I had a couple of clerical kind of, oh, Brent Buehler, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I walk my dog late at night, sometimes after the news and stuff, and I'll go through all the parks in town with my dog. It might be eleven thirty.
You're a criminal, Ben Brent.
I know. And, and so I, I, I don't understand why these little cut-through parks in town would have a ten o'clock cutoff. Uh.
So, sure, I can answer, I can answer that, Brent. So, looking at a lot of other towns and their ordinances, that was just the number that they used. Um, was, was at ten PM for, you know, events and things going on. Like I said, I'm pretty sure you're not gonna see blue lights if you're walking your dog through the park. Um, and um, if you are, hopefully you can run. So, um, but uh, you know, again, it can be changed. I, I think this is more, this is more focused on an event type thing going on at the park versus, you know, taking a stroll with a cup of coffee. So.
Well, I understand. I just didn't uh know if those parks necessarily had to be included in that timeframe or, or they could be um separate, is all. Um. That, that was my, my concern, my question. I don't want to be a criminal and didn't realize I was at this point.
Well, you're not yet. They haven't adopted.
Okay, good.
No, I know, again, we can change all of that, so.
The, the point is well taken. I mean, there are these downtown, you know, pocket parks, so-called, that maybe are a little different in character from Esterbrook Park. But they are all treated in the same way. Um, may, maybe it's simpler, maybe it's more consistent to treat them all in the same way. Or maybe we ought to um be a little careful about, you know, steering it toward events, or maybe we don't have to because we've just talked about it. I don't know.
I, I wonder if we could include language that talks about congregating? Because it seems like one thing to have someone walk through a park, which I think would happen. You know, I, I could imagine nighttime events when people would be walking, you know, back from an event and, you know, walk through one of the downtown parks. Um or even like Brent walking his dog through Esterbrook, which would be different than like a group of people going to hang out at Esterbrook. Which I think um would be something that would be um, you know, the congregating. So I, I guess I'm wondering if in an edit, we could, we could include that idea.
Could do it by every single park and their own separate lines if you want.
No, I was thinking it would fit all the parks, as long as we talked about the difference between congregating and just passing through.
Parks have sidewalks through them, so of course you can walk through these parks.
Not you, Bernie.
I've been kicked out of a few parks in the past.
Yeah, Brent?
Well, I, I walk mostly in these town parks, the little ones that are cut-throughs, like, like I said, and uh there, there just seems to be more visibility and maybe uh uh police drive-bys and stuff than like in Esterbrook or even a uh cemetery park. So, I was, I was I guess being selfish and just talking about the littler ones here in town that are cut-throughs from the parking lot behind the cafe and you know, things like that, that other people might use as well. Crescent Park, cutting over, so. Um, that, that's it. Thank you. That, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, Tracy.
Yeah, I mean, I think Tim had a good idea. I mean, I, I, I think the hours and stuff need to be the same. You know, as they are, but as Tim said, just put something in there. So it just covers con, you know, congregating. I know that was a big thing when we were in high school. That was a big deal that everybody congregated in the park. So I, I think the 10:00 PM curfew was a good, a good time to, to put that in there, but just, you still need to build a walk through it.
Dave, is that an edit you could consider for next time? I had the two little edits I was going to suggest, one is actually kind of in that vein. I wondered about, it's, it says, a person shall not enter onto a town park. And I didn't know if it should say remain, but maybe this will get taken care of in that edit. And the other one, I have to say, at the beginning, I, it should say the select board of the town of Brandon. I think that we have, you know, some inclusion kind of concerns in that way. And if we're going to take it seriously, we should take it seriously. So can you make that little change and then maybe see about the congregating thing and and you guys want to leave the, leave the fines as they were?
I'm okay with it.
How about I muck it up and we get back to this next board meeting? I mean, we're not in a hurry for it.
No. Great. Okay, I think that was.
Anything else comes to mind, they can just shoot me a message?
Seth Brent's got his hand up.
Oh, Brent, sorry.
Sorry, I, I think I didn't lower it.
Okay. That was all good input. Is there any other input on this, on this proposed policy? Well, I guess it's an ordinance, proposed ordinance.
This is Bill Moore.
Bill Moore.
And, uh, I mean, I can, I can, I can work on it with Dave. There's, there's a possibility too, I mean, not to have this thing become obsolete. When, you know, but adding in, you know, any sort of language about possible future parks as well. I mean, because there's a chance we'll have more park areas coming, you know, whether either by loan or, you know, areas that we've already reclaimed. And are, you know, mowing and keeping, keeping kept.
That raises a good point, like, so should we have something in here or a separate one? Or should we address kind of town owned lots generally? Like we have, you know, the little Wheeler Road piece, we have the little Newton Road piece. Are those just kind of generally considered there's no public access or they're considered there must be public access as a condition of taking the FEMA money to buy out the property? Or what's the status of those kinds of things, Dave?
There's definitely public access to every one of those. I think one thing we'd have to determine too is the Wheeler Road lot has turned into sort of a, a parking area for folks to go cycling and walking and whatever. And you know, if someone could leave their car there for a while and we, and then we'd have to think, because we have the Conant Square parking ride that we're going to be building here, you know, like if that's a parking ride, if someone's cars there till 1:00 AM, you know, they, they should be allowed to leave it there if they're, you know, and we'd have.
Well, we have the chargers there, you know, and, and people frequently, that, that would be, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think I, I would make the recommendation that you leave it just to those sort of public gathering places and not every piece of property town Brandon knows.
Okay. And are you saying that there's no real need for any kind of board statement or any kind of public facing ordinance or policy about the other pieces?
Well, I mean, not now. They're not anything now. It's certainly something that could be added in in the future, but and now they're just a chunk of land.
I, I'd be interested in, just while the conversation is, is broadening, and we have some time to think about this, whether or not the town forest is another similar kind of publicly usable recreation space that we might want to keep people out of between 10 and six, you know, 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And it might make sense to fall under this umbrella.
So Tim, the problem with the town forest, it's somewhat landlocked. Actually, it is landlocked. You have to, you have to go through quite a few private property owners in order to.
16 to be exact.
Tracy?
16 to be exact.
So that sort of, that's, you know, then you're, now, then we'd be dealing with folks trespassing on the, a private landowner's property to get to that. And I don't know if we want to go down that, that road or not. No pun intended.
So, so does that mean that the town forest is not open for public recreation?
You can drop you there in a helicopter, but I just, you can't access it. I mean, that's the problem with it. And
I'm just trying to understand clearly.
Is it, is it accessible through the other towns that, like, I think, doesn't Chittenden have a little piece of town forest in Chittenden?
You're going through, you're going through five different landowners to get to the Chittenden lot.
So that theirs is also inaccessible?
We almost touched the old, oh, I don't know what it's called now. If you go Van Cortlandt and you, you take the the turn to the south that comes back onto Birch Hill, there, there's, but that was, it was Jeffords old land. I don't know who owns it now, but there's still a chunk between our land, our town forest and that road too. So it's, yeah. It's somewhat inaccessible, kind of like the lot behind the Legion too.
Doesn't the lot behind the Legion though have Route seven footage?
Not ours, nope.
Oh, okay.
Well, you've got a, you've got a ledge there, but you can't, we have to blast through stone to get there, so.
Still no. Yes, there is. Yes, there is. It's between the Legion and the road that goes up in there right now, or between the the sports place and the Legion, and the road that gets up into the local property.
The line goes through, right through the middle of that little quarry that's filled up with water there.
Yeah.
We don't have to fish in there.
And did that, did that answer your question about the town forest part?
Yeah, I thi- I think so. It's, it sounds like we just need to make it clear that the town forest is not open for public recreation.
Has it been a concern?
I, I, I guess it's just news to me that, that that we, we don't use our town forest for recreation.
So if I may, quite a few years back, and I don't know if anyone, even Seth was on the board then, we had some folks come to us that were logging, I think up off the road, I just told you. And they had to go through some, another landowner's property. And they came to the select board, because there actually was a thing about if there's these logging rights, but they have to get permission from that landowner because their parcel was landlocked. And I got pretty contentious. I remember that, that was. That went on for a while. So there's definitely, you know, there's, there's a lot of law around it right now. There has been.
Yeah, my, um, I, I, I used to have some, some forest land in Williamstown, Vermont. And my understanding at the time, which was, you know, back in the 90s, was that there's no such thing as a landlocked parcel in Vermont, that each parcel has to be guaranteed a right of way. And that it's, it's, it's possible that, you know, land, land, you have to go through other people's land to get there, but that's that every parcel has a, an access right of way from a road. Now, I.
Not necessarily.
And I, I think, I think what you're going to find is on that, if you check into that a little further on a land, on a landlocked piece of property, the town would have to arrange some sort of right of way for that landowner to cut timber on it to be able to pay the taxes. But there doesn't mean that he's going to get a right of way to go in to build, build a house lot or to build uh, do any building of any sort on it. I think it would be just a and I, I believe that's the way that is written, or believe that's the way that's meant for.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we've got some input on the ordinance about town parks and recreation areas. I think that was helpful. Dave's going to do a little editing on that. And if there's further input, that can go to Dave sometime, say in the next week or sometime this week, so we have a chance to work on it next week before it comes back. Okay? All right. So kind of related to that is item eight, a parks and recreation facility use waiver. Dave or Bill, you want to talk about this? Whoever wants to talk about this?
So this, this came about on my first draft of the ordinance we just discussed, because I had, you know, the no alcohol permitted unless licensed cater. And then in section, section five, letter E of that does say the rec department may request individuals to acknowledge and agree to an assumption of risk and waiver of liability for certain activities to allow participants, to participants to bring their own alcohol. I use, I use cornhole league as the number one uh, event that this would be used for. So this, this, I asked, I asked our town attorney if she could draft something up for us that even if it was possible to have this happen, that, you know, this would have to be under the guidance of the rec department in these, in these situations. So if there is a rec, rec event that, like the cornhole league, that they would have to sign this waiver. Well, if you read it, it's the waiver of liability and assumption of risk before they could partake in the event that the rec department was putting on.
Yeah, I think this kind of rang a bell to me because this is very, very similar to what our insurer requires me to have my bicyclist sign. Not that they drink, but, um, you know, it, they have to, I'm just reading mine. It's the same kind of sections, express assumption of risk, binding release of liability. Mine also has a forum selection agreement, which says that if they sue, they'll sue in superior court of the state of Vermont. And I don't know if that doesn't have to appear in the towns, because maybe the town, you know, because of its sovereignty situation, you know, is only suable in a Vermont court anyway. So but yeah, it looks, to me, it looks like it covers all the bases. I like it.
Yeah, and it's, it's similar to what we've had for when we do events here, like bluegrass and weddings or things of that nature.
I think it's wise, it's good protection for the town. And I think that if folks are, you know, inclined to participate in an event and really, you know, it's important enough to them to have access to adult beverages, so to speak, that, you know, they, they've got to be understanding that they're doing that on their own risk and without any kind of liability on the power of the town. Seems reasonable.
Yeah, I, Seth, I really can't think of any other event right now. And I, and, you know, this certainly isn't something we're going to hand out like.
Well, we could have alcohol at select board meetings and make them go a little bit more smoothly, Dave.
Well, you guys can right now. You're all at home. You just have to get a licensed caterer to do it at the town hall. So, okay.
So do you want a blessing on this one? Or do you want to just institute it as a management practice? And you're advising?
I wouldn't mind, well, I wouldn't mind your blessing on it. That way we know.
I think we should, I think we should. I'll, I'll move that we adopt the, we adopt the parks and recreation facility use acknowledgement of risk waiver. Or facility use waiver. That's a better way. It's in the agenda that way, facility use waiver.
Second.
Second from Tracy. Is there a discussion? Thanks for doing this. All in favor, say aye.
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 That was unanimous. Great. The list of bills is here. What's pleasure of the board on the warrant?
Make a motion to approve them. About $144,081.48.
Thanks, Brian. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second from Tracy. Any questions on any of the bills? Anyone in the public got any questions? No, it's a pretty straightforward warrant this time around. A few payments for appropriations, which is great to see the partner agencies. All in favor of approving the warrant as presented, say aye.
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 That was unanimous. Okay, so we got two executive sessions. Have we got, oh, we got a liquor commissioners meeting too. So we'll we'll recess the select board. It's four minutes after eight. Select board's at recess. Are there any announcements for the community anybody would like to make right now? If not, we'll go ahead and call.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Moore, yeah.
I want to let everybody know if they have any interest in being on the prudential committee of the Brandon Fire District Number One. There is an opening. We're accepting letters until the end of this week.
Vacancy on the prudential board for the fire district. Thank you, Bill. It's not your seat.
Unfortunately, no, it is not.
No, you're, you're on the board. Okay, all right. All right, at 8:05, I'll call the Board of Liquor Control Commissioners to order. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Tracy moves to approve. Second from Brian, any changes to be made? None heard. All in favor of the agenda as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Is there any motion to take item two and three as a consent agenda? The minutes of April 26th and some special event permits previously approved by the town clerk for Red Clover at Green Park.
Come on.
Tracy moves to approve. Is there a second? Second from Tim. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. That's unanimous. Item four.
I'll adjourn.
Mr. Coolidge moves to adjourn. Second from Mr. Wyman. It's not debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Very good. Okay, last chance for any public comment before we do these two executive sessions that are on the selection form. Okay, at 8:06, I'll call the select board back to order. And we're going to have two executive sessions at this time. So the first one is to include the town manager and the chief of police. And I see they're there. And, oh, Charlene, usually Mike is the clerk, so. Who's willing to do this? Who can do this tonight? It's, I, I don't know that we're going to have any action required.
I can do the first one, but I won't be here for the second one. So I might want to have the same person. The former clerk?
Once in future clerk Tracy Wyman's going to give us times and motions, okay? Great.